It is seven o'clock. Welcome to the Wednesday, February 19th, 2025 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please join us in assigning the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're a little bit bigger. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Hi. We have a scheduled appointment at seven o'clock for Lydia Drake Library volunteers with a request for a vote to authorize a gift fund. Would you mind coming on up to the and just identify yourselves and let us know why you're here?
My name is Durian Tavaris. I live at Seven Ladies Slipper Circle. I've been a resident of Pembroke for 55 years. I've been volunteering at the library for 20 years. And now I am the director of the library.
Hi.
I facilitate, just to let you know what I do, I facilitate a group from community-based day services in Plymouth. It's a group called Living Independently Forever. They're slightly challenged young people and they've been volunteering at the library for a year and a half. It's an extremely successful program for them and for me. They help me do lots of things around the library. But I want to introduce Brian Abbott, who's been volunteering for several years now, and he will tell you exactly why we're here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Abbott and I'm a Pembroke resident and volunteer at the Lydia Drake Library here in town. And we're here before you tonight in hopes of reauthorizing the Lydia Drake Gift Fund. From the first time I entered Lydia Drake Library, I kind of felt like I was at home or at my grandma's house. And I think a lot of people feel the same way once they step in through the doors there. Lydia Drake was a former school teacher and she donated the building to the town and the library opened in 1944. The library is now staffed completely by volunteers. And we're always on the lookout for new volunteers. So if anyone wants to volunteer, we would love to have you. Some of the some of the patrons choose to support the library with their time, while others choose to support it with their wallets. And in the almost two years that the library has been reopened since closing during COVID, we've grown our core group of volunteers and loyal guests. Some of the guests visited for the first time during our 80th anniversary celebration we threw in June last summer, where we honored our late grave volunteer Ruth Carpenter by installing a little free library in our front yard and dedicating it to her in her honor and her service to our town. During and after our celebration, we reflected with requests for donations from the Carpenter family, their friends, and other attendees from that day. As of right now, we had to tell them that they could not donate directly to the library, but they would have to donate in our honor to the town. And many of those donations never came to fruition because the donors wanted the funds to go directly to the library. With the reauthorization of the gift fund, these generous donations would go directly to the needs of the library, such as our Wednesday Story Hour that brings 10 to 20 kids with their caregivers every Wednesday morning where they sing. We do a story, a craft, and then have open play for a couple hours until about noon. Once the weather is permitting, we would like to also be able to accommodate the Story Hour in our backyard there. And we have monthly and quarterly volunteer and library committee meetings respectfully. Whereas volunteers, we bring our needs and wants for the library, upkeep, and items to attract new guests and volunteers. With the gift fund, we would be able to address some of these needs without being a burden to the town and the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So was there a gift fund in the past and it no longer exists? Is that what happened? So what happened to it?
Daniel Lilly and our B Word, the trustees who were in charge of the project for many, many years. And it went to waste. And over time, it just becomes deficient. I could get more information from Michael about how that happened. But it does not currently exist in the form that it used to. Small donations for small supplies that offset each other and giving trees and being allowed to take, you know, tissues, paper towels, you know, Mr. Erasers and all kinds of stuff. That's the sort of day-to-day need they have because they're getting a foot traffic and they need to do that. And they have very generous patrons that want to donate and they're starting to receive donations. And those donations, without a gift fund, would go into the general fund. And expenses would come out of their budget. And they don't have a large budget. So when the gift is intended to offset the cost of the program that they're sitting at and parents and I'm sure the kids are writing checks too, right? We're getting all the kids online. So that's, that came down to the fund. So we said to Michael, what's the best way? What is the smartest way? And he said, we will authorize the gift fund. Now, because it's not authorized, now your vote absolutely can move to authorize the Lydia Drake Fund. But that, I believe, is your request.
It's not, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's more than coffee money. Like, well, I wish it was, but believe me, I do. I was just curious. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question. So what mechanism is used? Are the trustees in charge of the fund? Who keeps track of the fund and the accounting?
The town accountant does. The, oh, that's right, this is here now. The trust does not have a vehicle for a formal board of trustees. These were always volunteers that were committed to the project, to the property. But we called them trustees, not in the sense of a true trust. Michael Buckley, the town accountant, handles the deposits, the investments, the trust itself. That's all through the town. It's a town-owned building.
So the town accountant will take in the money and disperse the money on behalf of the library?
And they will voucher their expenses against that fund and it will all be literally the way the auditor wants to see it.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
I do.
Go ahead, Sean.
Actually, I live over near the Lydia Drake and just like kind of the Cobb Library. Can you give, I guess, the folks at home kind of what numbers you see every year since you basically working with the, you know, and if you can come to the microphone?
Not for the Storytime that we do on Fridays. We have the adult individuals with disabilities that come, that group. I'd say we get between 20 and 30 visitors a week. We're only currently open on Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, Wednesday afternoon, and Friday morning. So the more we, more volunteers we have, the more hours we would be open. We just are lacking in volunteers who are willing to be there for their hours of operation, basically.
And that's every week, excluding possible snowstorms, you name it?
Yeah, yeah. Once in a while, we, I think two weeks ago, we closed, we canceled Storytime just because of the snow. It wasn't shuffled out. We weren't plowed out yet, so we had to cancel Storytime. But we get an average of about 15 kids and then their caregivers. So there's probably about 20 people that come to Storytime. And then we get another five to 10 on Fridays to come in. And those volunteers, that group that comes here, comes to the library, helps us, they do some, like they clean, disinfect the toys for us. They file books away. They clear out the book drawer, stuff like that.
They also make sure, it's an old-fashioned library. It's an old-fashioned library. We have cards in catalogs.
Yeah, no computers.
There's no computers. If there's ever a computer there, I quit.
We have a typewriter.
Yeah, it's electric.
An electric typewriter, yeah.
It's, it's the way a library used to be. And what was I going to, why did I come up with that?
About the Friday group.
Oh, yeah, the Friday group also. They're making sure that the cards are in the catalog, actually have books on the shelves, which nobody's ever done. I thought that was pretty good that they did that. They're still doing it.
I like it. I like it.
I knew you'd like it.
And being counterproductive.
And they're, they may be slightly challenged young people, but they're brilliant and they do a wonderful job. And it's proved to be a wonderful thing for them and for us. So. And I would invite you all to come to the next open house that we intend to have in the spring. It's a beautiful place. And we have all the current books too.
You're welcome to Storytime as well. That's what it's most happening.
Yes, Tracy, you should. I know. So it's a wonderful place. And I hope that it always, I always have volunteers like Brian and the young people that are volunteering. It's made a big difference. Thank you.
Oh, and as of this coming Sunday, we have a new group of ladies that are coming to rent the Pine Room that we have there. It's just open space. They're going to be starting on Sundays. They're going to do it once a month, I believe. And they do crocheting and stuff for children in hospitals and whatnot.
Because you do have space to rent there.
We do. Yeah, you can rent out, you can rent out the Pine Room.
It's a great place for a birthday party.
We've done Rocco's second and third birthday party there last year.
My granddaughter's graduation party. My son's 50th birthday party. It's a beautiful place. $50.
Nice.
And it holds probably 30 to 40 people easily.
Our book club, they have a good, they have a good presence online. You can see pictures of the Pine Room. It's beautiful.
That's gorgeous. I've been.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize a gift fund to be known as the Lydia Drake Gift Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
It's nice to meet you. Too early for our next appointment, so why don't we move on to some board action items? I'm not going to go to the town warrant. Why don't we look at, we have Chris Everett up for Affordable Housing Committee. Do we want to discuss? Or is there a motion?
I would move to appoint Chris Everett to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Vote to accept the minutes of February 5th, 2025.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think we want to go near the budget yet. Do we have any liaison updates while we're here? Anyone? Nothing? Okay.
A couple things.
Do you want to, do you have any town manager updates that are not the budget that we could, okay, let's do that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again.
So a couple of quick notes. If you haven't returned your town census, and we know by the numbers that most people haven't, please do so. The town clerk uses the census. It's very important to the town to track our numbers and data information. And it can be important for certain grants and other things. And if you don't return the census, you can be listed as inactive on our voting rule. So make sure everyone returns the town census. Second thing, I want to congratulate the boys into a track team this past weekend at the Regent Leadership Center. They won the state championship. I mean, that is, that's awesome. We have several Pembroke physical teams that are having very good seasons and our, those seasons are coming to an end. And some of those folks will be moving on to the MIAA tournaments and I want to wish them all well, especially the girls' hockey team who is having an outstanding season. Having coached girls' hockey many, many years in the past, I want them to have tremendous success and keep the sticks down, girls. They call penalties on those. So. So, and folks that are looking for something to do this week, the community center is open. The track is open. A lot of the rooms are open. So if you're out and about, you know, come by the community center and enjoy the space. Other thing, it is going to have some cold days the next couple of days. I want to, with it being school vacation week, just make sure that everybody puts on layers and mittens. You know, we recommend mittens instead of gloves, but gloves are better than nothing. So, and if you're parents of youngsters who are going out, make sure that their fingers, toes, noses, ears are covered so that they're protected. And because it is school vacation week, I'm going to go back to a story that I told last year. Haven't seen it happen this year and hopefully I never will again. But last year I was driving to work and I saw a sled come off a snowbanking into the street. The kids were sliding into the street. So if you're a student or a youngster, please don't do that. And if you're a driver, pay particular attention. The kids are darting out from behind snowbanks now that we have some. So we don't have any unnecessary accidents. That's all I have for this week, other than the budget stuff.
Okay, we'll come back to that, I believe. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business, even though that's not? Nope. Jeez, we might be taking a break. All right. All we have left is our town meeting warrant and China Walk and our budget presentation. Do we want to maybe?
We can, we can start with the warrant.
I think we probably should. We have 15 minutes.
Going to take a ton of time unless there's a lot of questions, which there could be. Keep in mind that we're just introducing the warrant this evening and that the board can, you know, choose to, town-sponsored articles other than budgets and mandatory items, the board can choose to not follow through them, citizen petitions. You should not. You should allow the citizen petitions to go through. So if you want.
I think we should get started. We have 15 minutes. And so tonight, we're only voting to place on for town meeting. Okay. Do we have any discussion of anything specific that we want to discuss tonight or any questions? I suppose we should start with special.
The special is nice and easy. There's only three articles. They're routine articles and there's no guarantee all three of them will be needed by the time the transfers, unpaid bills, and the collective bargaining agreements are or are not settled. So within the next two to three weeks, you may see that one of those comes off, possibly two of them come off. But each one of those three are standard articles on every special.
And these are just placeholders and
I would ask you to leave them all in. We may need them.
Yeah. They're placeholders at this point. Items will come and go and change. So please don't read into anything that's with them, other than the fact that they're there as a placeholder.
I suggested the chair bring each one up for discussion and then call for a vote to place them on the warrant.
Individually or is this?
Individually.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we start with Article One then?
So Article One is departmental transfers. The list is not complete. So, you know, as I said, as we get through the fiscal year and closer to town meeting, we'll be completing this list. And this might completely come off, but I know, I can tell you it won't completely come off because I know there's at least two departmental transfers that will have to occur. So. So it is what it is for transfers.
And could I just say for, for the board and the public, what we have before us are, they're more refined than a draft, but they're not the end article. Because as Bill just mentioned, they will be, they will be refined. For us to vote here tonight is simply to put them on the warrant. If something comes up later on down the line that we need to reconsider placing it on the warrant, we could reopen the warrant and then pull it off or amend the language in it. So what we're doing here tonight is simply, we're building the warrants, both the special and the annual. And we do have room to amend them in the future. So this is not your final vote. This is to build the warrant so that the town manager knows what he has in the warrant and can refine them. Is that accurate, Bill?
Exactly.
Thank you.
The tribe has spoken.
Do we have any questions, further questions about Article One?
Move to include Article One in the special town meeting warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Two, departmental transfers.
So Article Two is actually for unpaid bills. So if a department has any unpaid bills from a previous fiscal year, which we do not at this time, but they often will come up. So we, as a prudent practice, we include this on the warrant so that we can transfer money to pay an unpaid bill for, because the prior fiscal year is closed and under Massachusetts statute, the only way to pay an unpaid bill is go to town meeting and ask for permission.
So if we include this there by default, and it makes sense to do so, and then there ends up not being any unpaid bills, then we vote to reconsider and remove it?
Yep.
Anything else?
Well, just to follow up on Steve's point, Steve's point, sometimes we don't know that to the bitter end and it's too late to open and close it again. So we just move on town meeting floor to take no action.
Right. That's the more common practice.
Okay.
Move to include Article Two in the special town meeting warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Three, fund collective bargaining agreements.
So collective bargaining agreements, it's, if we didn't include it, it'd be considered an unfair labor practice. So we include it as a practical matter on the town side. We're required to do that because the advisory committee must review our MOAs 30 days prior to town meeting. So this article is to fund that, that action if there is any action, any settlements. We're hoping that there will be. We're in negotiations with most of our unions at this point and we'll be starting with the others very, very quickly. So. This, it's prudent to have that on there. We don't have any numbers yet because we haven't settled those.
Okay. Any discussion, comments?
Move to include Article Three in the special town meeting warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's second? Steve?
Yes.
Do we need to close these warrants tonight?
They're closed.
They're closed. Move on to the annual town meeting warrant?
So you can actually take the first six articles, six articles?
Nine.
First nine articles?
Yeah, I was going to say eight possible collective bargaining.
Yeah, as a group, if you wanted to, because they're mandatory articles for funding the town budget and all of the associated budgets around that, like the two enterprise funds, the capital plan, and settling the collective bargaining agreement. And the revolving fund is required, CPC is required by law, and the trust fund transfers is not required by law. However, we should do it to keep maintaining our financial management principles.
So you're saying the first nine?
First nine. They are articles, routine articles that happen every single year.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you advance that slide, Billy, that's like the second to check.
Thank you.
Next one.
Yep. Oh, that's better. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments, or are we comfortable taking these?
I was going to say, say a blurb about each, but since we have the slide up on the screen enough for the board, for the public's consumption. So I'm happy that's up there. I move to include Article One through nine in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up is
Do you want to take Article 10?
Sure.
Okay.
Article 10 is school bus camera enforcement systems.
This is a request from the school committee that came to us via the superintendent. And the request before the town is to accept the provisions of Chapter 399 of the Acts of 2024. It's not only a best practice, but the police department's gotten together with the school department and recommended that these cameras be able to capture the people who do not stop or slow down when the flag is out. This is for cameras shooting externally from the bus to make sure that the students on that bus and who are crossing the streets have the maximum amount of safety allowed. And this is a provision that was put into law to allow towns to explore this option. But we would have to adopt those acts. And we intend to print out the entire Chapter 399 as given to us by the school department in an appendix F for anyone that really wants to read all of the language. It's about two paragraphs. It's pretty clear. It's nothing, it's nothing hinky, but you see cameras in buses. And of course, you wonder. It's to be able to capture the data and the impressions from outside of the windows of the bus when that flag or stop sign is out and the lights are flashing.
Just to put an exclamation point on that, this is not video cameras filming the children in the bus.
No. No, it is not.
Filming the roadway.
Yes.
Is it just filming the front, the side, the back, which
I don't know what. I think at this point, they're still in the exploratory stage of different types of systems. And I think they've seen all of the above. It may come down to economics.
As far, at least as far as I know, it's up that side. That's where the stop sign, that's where the stop sign is.
Exactly. Front and back. I'm just kind of hoping, I'm hoping that it has that rear view as well for kids behind. But, you know.
A lot of other towns have them.
It's odd. Since COVID, there's a real increase. Since all the vehicles went back out on the road with all the new licensed drivers, with people who may have been out of practice, a lot of incidences of this that could potentially be prevented. So that's the reason they're going to try to explore this tool.
Who pays for the camera installation? Is it?
It would be the school department.
Have they explored any of that yet, or that's in the future?
As far as I know, it's in the future. I don't have detail on it. I don't have detail on what their work they've done to date is. I think they have to accept the statute before they even go any further.
Anything further?
Move to include Article Ten in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Article Eleven, transfer closed fire station number three at 380 Washington Street to general municipal purposes for the purposes of sale or lease.
So, Articles Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen are all land transfers. Article Eleven is the fire station property for sale or lease. We have interested folks, you know, nobody 100% at this point, but, and it's, it's, you know, just that small section of that property. That's Article Eleven. Article Twelve is the land exchange that is required for our Z1, for the new Swanburg Well. The EP requires us to have so much protected land around that, we need to exchange some land with two property owners there, where we will be giving them property, and they will be giving us property, so that we can have that protective ring around the new well. And then Article Thirteen is the water department suggested that, for the purpose of, you know, us getting income from both the sale or lease of the properties and the new taxation on those properties, that there are two lots along Route 53, where the Swanburg property touches Route 53, we need to cut those off and then market them. One of the, they're both along 53, one is next to Christina's, and the other one is further to the northeast. If you look at that map, you'll see those two little points that come out and touch 53.
So, both Articles Twelve and Thirteen are transfers that are there to support the Swanburg Well, ultimately. That's the purpose.
Oh, ultimately.
And the fire station we're referring to is the one on the corner of 14 and 53, right?
Correct. We were going to, we had talked about.
I know where it is, I just.
We had talked about accessing that, surplusing that property, or leasing that property. My preference will be to lease that property, because we lease the tower and we get income from that existing tower. So, I don't wanna lose that income by selling the property, so my preference will be, and my recommendation will be that we lease it.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
Move to include Article Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen in the annual town meeting warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just a note, Article Thirteen's not listed here, it's a blank number here, right?
Yeah, we're waiting for the language.
Well, kind of pencil them.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear.
From this point onward, we shall number it, because it gets a little fluid.
Right. Makes it easier to make the motion, too, because it's numbered next to it.
All right. Article Fourteen, vote to amend zoning bylaw, medical marijuana overlay district, amend general bylaw, Article Twenty, Section 14B, and accept general laws, Chapter 64 and subsection three, to impose an excise on the retail sales of marijuana.
So, I wanna take a moment and thank Sabrina and town council for their efforts regarding this.
Oh, yes.
This was a lot more extensive than we originally expected, and there's a lot of work that has changed in this article.
I know.
So, as you can see from the three separate sections of the article, effectively, what this does is this would allow the sale of marijuana, marijuana in that one overlay district that the town has.
Which is where?
Which is in the northeast quadrant of the town.
Around the line, look there, do that.
Well, I, I know where it is, I just wanna make sure everybody else knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, so we have a medical marijuana, we have a medical marijuana overlay district, and this would be in that same district?
Yes.
So, this is submitted by select board?
Well, I had requested it.
So, the town of Pembroke, if you'd accept, discussion on it?
Yep, of course.
You didn't call for it, so I just wanna be sure. Town Pembroke has voted three times to deny recreational marijuana. Three times, two times town meeting, one times at the ballot box. So, I just wanna put that out there. There are, there are folks in town who do not want it in town, they understand that there's taxes to be garnered through that, and a lot of people have moral and health reasons not to allow marijuana in town. And there are folks that think the other way around, too. They, they think they gain health benefits through marijuana use. So, there's, there's gonna be a lot of diverse opinion at town meeting floor, and I'm not opposed to bringing it to town meeting, for the people to have the debate and vote.
And the last time that was voted on was 2017? Does that sound right?
It might've been a tick longer ago.
Okay. It was around there.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions or commentary?
Yeah, I mean, if we're doing some discussion, commentary, et cetera, I know we're not voting favorability, you know, either way on things, but question about that, was that a, when it was brought before, was it a citizen's petition that brought it to a town meeting article, or was it the select board that brought it?
We brought it, we brought it. We want, everyone was, everyone knew that it was gonna be a big money grab of taxes. We brought it in, and the chief of police at the time was probably the most outspoken, saying that, you're making a deal with the devil. Don't do it, it's immoral, it's, it's gonna cause problems with the police department, it's gonna cause problems with society. Don't do it. That was his take.
It just seems to me that, you know, you can go right over the border, right over the, to the next town, maybe 1,000 feet, and just in terms of that discussion, like, you can't really keep it out, you can get it from any town around anyway, why give that, that tax money to external, to towns next door, anyway? And then on top of that, it's, you know, what signal do we wanna send to commercial businesses? If it's legal in Massachusetts, and it's consensual between adults, then what's the big deal?
To your, to your point, Steve, when we were voting on it, too, it was before the Commonwealth accepted it for recreation.
Okay, so that's interesting.
So, yeah, so to bring it back up again, see if there's any revenue, we have an overlay district for it, you know, I would love to see the town people, you know, but this is basically to make sure we can tax it. So, I mean, 'cause that's what the next, what, three articles, correct? That we have?
Yes.
They're all in this article.
Yeah. It's allowing it, allowing it in the zoning, the recreational, and the taxing of it, all in one.
No, there, there are three parts to this article, and there are two more articles.
Yeah.
It is a little complicated, and in learning how this works and spending time on this, the Article Fourteen before you, that you're discussing right now, is the zoning bylaw amendment. And the select board would be putting forward a zoning bylaw amendment. And the planning board chair has already been informed that this is possible, and they are welcoming and ready to hold a public hearing, because that is their job. Once a zoning article comes through, it goes straight to planning board to hold a public hearing. But the interesting thing about this article is it's A, B, and C.
Yes.
And when you go through it, the A section of Article Four, Article Fourteen is the zoning amendment. Section B is the change to, as a matter of fact, I didn't wanna have it too far away from me, and here I am with it, too far away from me. So, the district has to come first. You have to find a place to put retail marijuana. Where do you want retail marijuana storefronts? Do you want them in the center? Do you want them somewhere else? So, the first part of this article is, get it in a sec, a section of town. Find out where it belongs. Put it in a zoning configuration. Then turn around, and with section B, say, and now change the general bylaws under marijuana, no allo, no allowances for marijuana. Now you have it, you can't prohibit it if it stays within the district, in the zone. And then C allows for the imposition of a tax, an excise tax, 3%, the maximum allowed by the state. So, you do that all in one article. If one piece fails, you can, like, if, let's say taxation fails, do you wanna proceed with everything else? You can't tax it. So, it allows, and that's town council's methodology behind doing it this way. Then the other two articles are just cleanups on the other items you already have out there. There's one that bans possession of marijuana in Pembroke, that is no longer legal. And then there is one that prohibits it on town property, which just needed to be cleaned up, because now the expression smoking marijuana doesn't apply, it's smoke vaporize or ingest. So, town council is very thorough, this entire section is completely cleaned up now.
Right.
One fell swoop.
One fell swoop.
Exactly. So, Article Fourteen, which is for recreational marijuana, Article Fifteen is for cleaning up use of marijuana on town property, and basically making sure that we ban it on town property, the three items that Sabrina just mentioned. And then Article?
Sixteen.
Sixteen is to, we can no longer ban the use of marijuana, Pembroke State law allows it.
Right.
So, we have to clean that up.
So, there's some housekeeping, too?
Mm-hmm.
That's mixed in.
It says that it's not possible to possess.
So?
And it is.
So, the, does the, okay, I see. So, for whatever reason, even Article Sixteen doesn't pass, it really doesn't matter, it's just not enforceable, because the state says you can't enforce it.
Right. Those are housekeeping.
It's just, it's pure housekeeping.
Question, does this trigger a ballot question?
No. And the interesting reason that this took so long to get back from council was them going back and forth. KP Law had several attorneys representing two other towns on the Cape and us.
Right.
Three different towns are doing this at the same time. So, they talked to the attorney general's office, and the attorney general talked to the Cannabis Control Commission, and all laws are silent on this. You've already banned it. What's the mechanism to now allow retail sales? Since you banned possession of it, and you put it in your bylaws, it's already been legalized by the state. You're going through the wholesale cleanup and saying, and now we'll allow retail sales in our previously districted medical side of town. So, they came back to KP Law and said, your opinion is what we're gonna rely on, which, I know, it sounds very grandiose, but the AG said, really, this one could cut both ways. And Lauren Goldberg gave the town of Pembroke the legal opinion that we do not need another ballot vote.
Right. Any other further thoughts on Fourteen by itself? If not, do I have a motion?
I would move to accept Article Fourteen.
Second.
Fourteen through sixteen.
You want to include the sixteen?
I'll amend it.
Fine.
Move to include Articles Fourteen through sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can we, just a follow-up on that? Because the town has voted three times against this, can we make sure that when we're advertising for this town meeting, that the people know that town meeting is the only vote you're gonna have on this, and it's not gonna be a ballot question later?
Yes.
Yes.
We need, there's some people that might be against this, that might, might not understand the ramifications of, you know, 150, or maybe, depending on the time of night it comes, could be 90 people voting on this.
Right.
March 24th would be the public hearing date with the planning board for this item.
And I'll work with planning with this.
We could, I could make sure all of you are invited, you're prepared. I will go, like, trying to have more conversation with people.
And I will be doing a TV show on PACT TV, I don't know if Steve Dodge, some years he joins me, some years he doesn't, on the entire warrant and budget, and when I do that, I will specifically take some time to mention that there will be no public vote on this, that if you wanna vote on it and say your piece, you have to come to the meeting.
Yeah, and, you know, I say all this, I'm, I don't wanna make it seem like I'm opposed to this, I just wanna, I wanna give people voice that aren't here, and, and, there are people that have opposed it in the past, I'm just representing them.
Sure.
Because, you know, as we all know, society and culture's changed since even 2017, so it's, it's been more commonplace for these sort of things around, all around Massachusetts. So, I just wanna make sure everyone's, every voice is heard.
Thank you, Dan. Do we wanna, do we, Sabrina know that the China Walk folks were coming?
Yes, we talked to them today.
Okay, so maybe we'll just continue for now?
Incident, yeah.
Okay.
I'll keep checking.
Just in case. All right, moving on to Article Seventeen, Accept the HERO Act to Benefit Service Members and Veterans.
So, the last legislative session, under Chapter 178 of the Acts 2024, the legislature passed some items that allows certain veterans additional exemptions, but it's by local option only, and on note by local cost only, so there is an impact to that on us for, on the overlay for cost wise, but we wanna make sure that the town meeting has the right to vote.
Okay. Any discussion? I have a motion.
Motion to place Article Seventeen on the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Eighteen, Vote to Eliminate Committees Made Redundant by Town Manager Act that Were Voted at Previous Town Meetings. And I know that we had to have some discussion on this.
So, we've, we've talked about this more, there's, there's a handful of them out there, and we'll go ahead and work through that. The town manager act changed a lot of what we do, we just need to clean up.
Right. I know we talked about it in a past meeting, and there were some that we couldn't remove, maybe it was like Town Landing Committee, I don't know if that was the only one.
It was a few.
It was really in the explanation.
That was it.
If you guys referenced that night, or Town Landing Cemetery Trustees Drainage Commission. And, you didn't discuss this that night.
Ironically.
But the Wage and Personnel Board has been made, I, I don't know, that might be a bigger thing to chew.
But.
The thing, the thing that's been unseated for like seven years?
No one wants to sit on it, but I don't know if they're gonna want it.
But, but the town manager act did make the town manager responsible for wage and classification. And there's been a huge discussion among several cities and towns about that, and most cities and towns are eliminating their wage of classification and going to a professional.
Wage personnel.
Wage personnel.
Wage personnel, yeah.
Is there any reason that we would keep that?
So, if you guys can just, you know, pick which ones you're thinking, or what makes the most sense, because we'll research the votes to help write the article, what day, what article, what time, like, when did this get voted in the first place, and we're going to unauthorized them.
Are the, are all of these listed, recommended by the town manager? Could be placed on here?
Yes.
All right. Make a motion to include Article Eighteen as presented in the town meeting warrant. The town manager will bring us more information, and we'll have discussion on it as we go forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Nineteen, amend the town bylaws by adding new Section 27 to Article 23, miscellaneous elimination of black plastic and restaurant carryout packaging. Any discussion?
Just some quick background on this, there's been research that shows that the black plastic to-go containers, when either frozen or microwaved, release a toxin into the foods, and it's very harmful, and we're not even sure why they're still using it. But we did go and talk to restaurateurs, and they have no problem, it's not gonna be a financial burden for them, they're gonna switch it over to cardboard. And in this article, there's also a relief if they, they still possess them after a six month period, so it's not gonna be detrimental to the restaurant industry whatsoever.
Well, did you talk to restaurant owners here in Pembroke?
Yes.
Because I did as well, and there were some that were concerned about the cost.
The, the cost is the same.
Not from the owners I spoke with, they actually sent over some information with what they would need to purchase instead of replace the plastic. And I'm not, I'm not saying that this is completely wrong, but there were a few that said that it was a lot more expensive to replace.
The Chamber of Commerce, I was told that went around to the restaurants, and there[1681.41] The Chamber of Commerce, I was told, that went around to the restaurants, and there wasn't any issues, but if there is, we can...
That's correct. It's on liaison with the Chamber. I know that basically, well, Fraser, just on your committee, went around. I also did, too, especially when we had the, the, sorry, question five for basically that, I went around the restaurant to see what's going on, and everyone seemed okay with it. A lot of them actually are getting away from it in the first place, such as, I know Tolsons, I know all the ones that are using foil, so, and, but the big thing is, for our supermarkets, they still use it. So you'd have to kind of look into that and see what that happens. If we're able to do so for these folks that are in town, such as a Stop &amp; Shop, we'll figure it out, I guess.
I think if it's prepackaged, doesn't, it doesn't fall into this. So like Stop &amp; Shop has a prepackaged something, it doesn't currently fall into this article.
Right.
I think a better, better argument is that the recycling center cannot read black plastic. So, people will take that, put it in the recycling bin, and we get charged a fee for it, so that's, that's a, that's a better argument when you get to town meeting floor.
How impactful, Bill, do you know how impactful dollars-wise? Do we, have we quantified that at all?
So they don't, they don't track the individual black plastic. I mean, we can tell you what the overall contamination rates are, but it, it can notice what the black...
It's not really quanti, no one's quantified it.
No.
So it, it's an issue, but you can only speak to the quality of the issue.
Can I ask you a side question? That, that, just, you know, piqued my concern when, when Rich spoke. Supermarket takeout sandwiches and nails, do we charge a mail tax on that?
Yes.
Okay, we do. Because there was a, there was a question a couple of years ago, and I don't remember it being resolved.
It's absolutely part of our mail tax.
All right.
Yep. If it's prepared as a takeout item, yes.
Okay, yeah, we don't need to get too deep in it, I just couldn't remember where it started.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to place Article 19 on the warrant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
So 20 is, we have ADUs now by right, additional dwelling units, and they will be, I don't know, Bill, have we seen any come in under the new law yet?
No.
They're going to start soon. You know, we don't have to get into exactly what the law is, but we're looking to just document any ADUs that are going to be Airbnbs or, you know, professional rentals. Not saying that we're not going to allow them, we just, we think that people have a right to know, maybe in a neighborhood they're looking to buy in, or their existing neighborhood, if there are Airbnbs being used.
Does the town need to vote to conform to a Mass. General Law Act after 140, subsection 1 through 40? That's what you're asking?
Like, is there nonconformance in the bylaw?
Doesn't hear in mind.
How necessary is, if there's already a state law, do we need to add?
Well, there's more wording to this, and it just allows us to document them. They're not required to submit anything to the town, but they will under this if they're going to be renting an Airbnb. And I say Airbnb...
But this just says to vote to conform with.
Yeah, there's more wording on, on this particular...
But not here?
Not here.
That you're...
So you want a placeholder until we get that language to review further?
Yeah.
Okay.
What does the language say?
Basically, if you are going to engage in a commercial rental, professional, online, whatever it is, you just have to register with the town. So the clerk's office will, will know where these are.
Is that common?
I think a lot of, because of this, ADU is a new, additional dwelling units are new, and now by right, there's going to be a lot more in a lot of different towns, and a lot of different towns are looking at it and just trying to put some regulations in.
Could we, Rich, it'd be helpful for, not just this board, but for the town meeting when they're looking at it. The difference of by right for an apartment that you're renting out to, it used to be just your relatives, now it could be anybody, versus an Airbnb? And what the difference between the two is, of what, what you have to go to the town for and, and let them know what you're doing? Good, like, side by side. If you, if you have a rental property, you have to do this for the town. If you're doing an Airbnb, you have to do this for the town. And that's what we're looking to conform with in this Mass. General Law Act listed?
Something to spell it out a little more, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I was going to say, good reference to Chapter 140. The only thing that you can capture from that is innkeepers. So it's a public lodging house, as opposed to your private family or a private renter. It's open to the public, to anyone, come and go. And that is a statute that exists that we have. It's the only thing I could latch on to, but...
And this was a request from Planning?
Yeah, just so, would, if people at town meeting don't know or aren't sure, they vote no. So the more information you can bring, the better off.
It's just a little clearer.
And if I have a question sitting as a selectman, you know darn well that people on the floor are going to have questions.
Sure.
So eliminate the questions, and you get a better result if you're an advocate.
Any other discussion on this one? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to add Article 20 to the town warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 21, Amend General Bylaws to Clarify Roofs as Exterior Feature in Historic Districts.
This is from Historic District, and they're looking to just loosen it up a little bit on what they're going to require on roofs. You know, if you have an asphalt roof, they're going to make you have a cedar roof. Just kind of bringing it into something that's a little more affordable for people who generally need a new roof, in, that only, that's in that historic district, probably.
Probably save the town money, too, I would imagine, for town historical properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
We don't have a lot. We have a couple, but we don't have a lot.
We'll save a little bit, maybe, in the future.
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Sorry, just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to go ahead and ask if there's more discussion.
Oh, I was just going to ask if there was any more discussion. If not, do I have a motion?
I would move to include Article 21 in the town warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 22, Amend the General Bylaw, Article 10, Advisory Committee.
I had a question about this. There was one thing that jumped out at me. I remember prior advisory would, it would have a rep, usually yourself or the chair from advisory would come, and then there'd be a vote between the advisory rep, the select board, and town moderator. But one thing that did jump out to me here is it says, committee, each committee member shall be appointed by an appointing authority composed of the moderator, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and the current standing committee. So that sounds like the whole committee. Do I have that right?
Where, where did you get that?
Linda, that is the thing that you said we didn't get cleaned up from Carolyn's version, remember? The weighted vote?
Oh, you said him, Carolyn's version.
That's, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's your, that's the old bylaw with the changes you wanted. But that particular piece, she couldn't have known that it was or was not correct. Have you taken that back to them yet?
No, that'd be it.
Okay, because that was what, I see, it's circled here, it makes sense to me that recircled needs adjustment, because otherwise, you're basically watering down all the other votes in the advisory. And it sounded like it probably wasn't the intent.
Two, one.
Two, well, it would, if it was the whole committee, then it would be...
Eight.
Eight versus two.
Eight, five, to one and one.
Right. And so that was what the concern was. But it sounds like the intent is actually to clean up the language, so it would still just be like the chair or a rep from advisory. Okay. Okay. That was the only thing that I had from it.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I would move to include Article 22, pending adjustment of the discussed language.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 23, Amend the General Bylaw, Article 20, Allow Variants by Select Board for Liquor License at New Community Center Functions. For functions.
Do you want me to talk about that, though?
Yeah.
The concept, when the community center was constructed, was to be able to rent out space for wedding receptions for different parties. That commercial kitchen attached to that nice area with the tables, the tablecloths, they can look, they can have a beautiful function in there. If the bylaw that prohibits alcohol consumption in or on town properties had the caveat of there being a waiver available through the select board, that would give Lance Kennedy, Bill Shinnard, everyone else who works over there, the ability to create that space, redline it right out. This is the area for functions, this would be the storage, and this is the back door through which it would come. This is where it would be contained if this permit were to be allowed. Then with each packet on renting that space for a reception, he can hand them a one-day liquor license application. I know.
So it'd be a two-pronged approach. The, the board would consider a waiver, and then the board would consider a one-day liquor license.
Correct. You would be waiving, allowing yourself the right to entertain an application for the space. Because right now, you can't even submit an application for it. I mean, technically, maybe it was done a long time ago, but it was not appropriate. The bylaw states no. So, in the interests of fairness for all, by saying there might be a mechanism to have that conversation, and that mechanism would be the local licensing authority, the select board.
And that would be also charging a fee for having alcohol on the premises?
Presumably. I know Bill and Lance have gone through this, but now if you think about this, and I don't necessarily want to get too far afield, but you could conceivably have the Arts Festival could have at their dinner the night before, they could have served wine, whereas they could not before. But again, it would be on a case-by-case application, just like you see it now, because every one of those has to be uploaded to Boston. It's not a carpet alcohol offering. What it is, is a vehicle to allow you to consider applications for properties previously closed off. And Chief McDonald supports this. But with a vote by you guys in public, he doesn't want to just hear about it later.
Thank you, Sabrina. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to place Article 23 on the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 24, Amend Zoning Bylaws RE Accessory Dwelling Units.
This brings us in conformance with the state, that's really what the idea of this one is?
Yeah, that's it. Enough said.
Sorry, I know, I remember there was a lot of discussion on us doing this, and then the state did it anyway. So, see, you have a good point.
So does the Planning Board need to take any action on this, since it's going to the state?
They will need to make a formal recommendation to town meeting, under the statute, that's all.
And their public hearing for this is, is it the 10th?
I don't remember.
Because it's not the 24th. The 24th is going to be marijuana.
So they do have a public hearing process?
They absolutely do. It's either the March 10th or March 17th. The rest of these will be open to the public. We'll make sure that every board member knows when that is as well, in case you want to come.
I have a question. So, this brings us in conformance with the state. The state provided a framework. What judgment, if any, was exercised within what was done here versus within that framework?
So I am not 100% familiar with this Planning Board article. What it does is, the state provides the basic guidance, this provides the local regulatory amendment necessary so that we have some ability to regulate.
So it's not just a simple in conformance with the state? There is some judgment that was exercised in crafting this, this bylaw, and what kind of restrictions within that framework that we're doing in town? And Planning will speak to that?
Yes. The state allows cities and towns to have their own regulatory structure. They did not provide a regulatory structure, so the cities and towns need to add it to their zoning button.
So, I, I know the Planning Board will have a hearing, and we can get into the minutia of it, but there is one thing that stands out. The very end of the article, 1A.D., no accessory dwelling unit shall be used as a short-term rental, as defined in Chapter 94G, which...
Satisfies.
Which is, isn't that contrary to the previous discussion?
It seems to be.
We'll have to reconcile those, Bill.
Yep.
It might, it might be that this rules over. Okay, so there's more discussion we have by the Planning Board.
Which was the article that?
The bylaw one?
Yes.
24.
24.
Oh, oh, if you go back?
The one, yeah, going back, the one that, that is now, that might be in conflict. It was 20? Okay. Conform with MGL, Chapter 140, section, yep, so 2-0, okay, just moving.
And, now which article was that? That was 20?
20.
20, 2-0.
No, I mean, the one where it's before is now.
Oh, 24.
I believe to include Article 24 in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Article 25, Amend the Zoning Bylaws, D.I.M.R.E.G. 2BB.
So, so this is, based on my understanding of it, there is some inconsistent zoning along Washington Street, where you have different sections that come in and out. The Planning Board is proposing to make that consistent all the way up to Washington, the Washington Street corridor, along Business B.
So, Bill, I know this is submitted by the Planning Board, but just to be clear, the back boundary line was previously 450 feet from the, from the street, and now they want it to be 800 feet?
For Business B, the rest of Washington Street is at 800 feet, is my understanding, and they, they're, they're trying to make that consistent with all, that whole section of Washington Street. There's three, three or four different zoning pieces there?
Yeah.
That are overlays. We should probably get a map and just look at it and see, so we understand it better. When we present the article, to you guys, we'll make sure we do that.
Yeah, so this is only pertaining to Business B and not residential commercial?
Correct.
Which condos, people, just so you know.
Uh-huh.
So there are some smaller lots that don't go as deep as 800 feet, that, you know, I could, probably a chiropractor shop, or a dentist's office, or something like that there. Is that going, is that going to make it harder for people to, to operate a business? Or is it pre-existing nonconforming going to take place?
It would obviously be pre-existing nonconforming for those that are in that situation. I'll have to get a map and look at it, so I'm fully, fully understand what the, where the, you know, full parameters of it, and see what's there now.
All right. And the Planning Board will be holding a hearing on this?
Yes.
So the Planning Board will be holding a number of hearings?
Seriously?
I think this is only article, and I will ask you, Madam Chair, at the end of this, that the select board, because it is your warrant, refer all zoning articles to the Planning Board for holding a public hearing, and a recommendation of town meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, they have to have, the, the Planning Board has to advertise and hold all of these individually. They can hold multiple per night, but they each have to be advertised and held independently.
It's going to be a busy spring for them. Do I have a motion?
Motion to place Article 25 on the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 26, Amend Zoning Bylaws, Use Definition UTIL-1.
So we don't have a current public utility definition within our zoning bylaws. We've had utility companies approach us, and because we don't have that definition, we, our zoning bylaws basically silent on it. They want to make sure that they define it, so they add this description.
So this would be by special permit, at least, pretty much anywhere?
Correct.
So we'd be reliant, we would have to, we would be relying on the judgment of the Planning Board as to, anytime a public utility comes and says, "We want it here or there or wherever," it'll be on the elected officials to make that judgment. Was there, do you know if there was a discussion on the Planning Board as to, a discussion about whether to do it as a special permit, or whether to do it in a designated zone or anything?
Well, yeah, they did have a discussion overall on that, yes, and it's very...
Where they delivered, they decided that they wanted to do it as a special?
Well, it's very difficult to do it in a specific zone. I'll give you an example. The, the most common public utility these days are the, the new solar array battery boxes, which are considered a, a public utility. They're everywhere. We want to be able to have some site plan approval before those.
So this opens up every single kind of zoning area for this special permit, for a potential public utility of some sort?
In the absence of it, though, it's open anywhere, under the statute.
It's, it's open anywhere, or they would go to the state, and then the state would...
There's no, there's no DPU approval for placement of those types of facilities.
So even if...
If you're silent on placement, it can go anywhere.
Really?
Yes, that's why you have to address it and put it somewhere. And if you're not really 100% sure where it should be, or where it might be most useful to your far-flung constituents, you might say, "It might need the flexibility of being located in an array of different places that an overlay won't cover, but we will do it by special permit, have all the abotters, and we will hear this through.
So, this actually gives the town more power than before it was, basically, because, like you said, silence equals anywhere.
I will assure you, many, many lawyers worked on this.
Yeah, they sure did.
Yes, they did.
From both sides. I would use the term more oversight than power.
It gives us oversight.
Yeah.
That's a good choice.
Move to include Article 26 in the town meeting warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Twenty-seven, Article 27, home rule petition to extend the retirement age of the current police chief.
So moved.
Well, do we have any discussion first, please? Is there any discussion or do you want to explain?
I think putting it on the warrant is probably okay. I think we should have a discussion about it like we would with any warrant article, what the pros and cons are.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
Well, the chief was involved in the public safety building from start to finish, and it'd be good to have some continuity as we start building the spring.
So, this extends him to 67 and then that's it?
So.
Do we have any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 28, community preservation funded project proposals.
This is a placeholder article waiting for the finalization of the projects before the CPC.
They haven't met, so we don't have the specifics. We know what we're applying for and take this, one other current analyst.
Any discussion?
Didn't, I thought we already paved?
These are the placeholder ones.
You don't have any projects.
Sorry, I was focusing on this and you guys had said it.
Yeah, I highlight it, and when it's black and white, you can't tell.
Okay, so it doesn't really matter looking at this right now.
And then I think I have a couple of notes next to it as to what I believe is coming, but I'm not sure.
So, broadly for recommendations coming?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Yeah. To minimize the ins and outs.
Yeah, and there's a recommendation on playgrounds and schools also this year, so, which I think is a good thing.
So, none of the dollar values are accurate, obviously?
Not these.
No, do you notice any caps underneath that isn't highlighted? There's a hint as to what I think is coming.
I just saw it, yeah.
Yep. So, I don't have dollar amounts, I'm sorry, not yet. They have to make the vote, and then we'll have it.
Do I have a motion?
I've moved to include Article 28.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 29, accept roadway, Bristol Estates.
So, the planning board is recommending that we accept this. The layout plan is completed and the park is completed, so they are recommending that we move forward.
And the select board will hold the public hearing.
Right.
So, has the planning board already had a determination of adequacy of the way?
Yes.
I believe that's the case.
And they will be advocating for this at town meeting floor?
Yes, and they are going to bring it to you to hold the hearing, and they will have a representative present.
Okay, so, just for the board and for the public, when a non-approved roadway comes, petitions the planning board to become a public way, there's a process at the planning board where they have a determination of adequacy of the way, which they review the plans and specifications of the roadway, the as-built. They take a sidewalk and actually walk down the street and review it in person, and then they determine that this street is up to par for the town to accept it without any monetary detriment to the town. There are streets that they've made repave, completely repave before the town would accept it, and sometimes it's good already, will accept it as is. Other times, they make the private owners do repairs before the town will accept it. So, depending on what the roadway is and where it is, the planning board does its due diligence on this before they bring it to the town. And once it's, once the town does accept it, it goes into our Chapter 90 allotment. So, it's good for the town that you get the extra miles for your Chapter 90, but then you're maintaining it now. So, having said all that, is there any other discussion?
No other discussion?
Are you ready for a motion?
I'll take a motion, thank you.
Move to include Article 29 in the town warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 30, accept town reports.
Thirty and thirty-one are routine.
And Article 31, annual town election. You want to just take both? Do I have a motion?
Motion to place Article 30 and 31 on the town, on the warrant. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 32, citizen's petition. Do we have it up here or no? Do you mind flipping to the next?
Yep.
Okay, it's up there. Vote to discontinue operation of the public water supply, et cetera. I mean, our citizens' petitions have to be placed anyhow.
Is that a question?
Yes.
So, Bill, there are times when a citizen's petition comes in and the language isn't quite up to par for the Attorney General, but if a citizen's petition is written in a way where the spirit is there and there might be a typo or two, does the Attorney General still accept that and does he make amendments? Or is it maybe thrown out of the ballot?
So, it really depends. In some cases, they toss it. In other cases, they will consider the error, as you said, as a small error, and that they will accept it with a change recommended by the Attorney General, but the language cannot be changed. Citizen's petition language must go as written. So, we're stuck with it and it may not meet the muscle of the JG.
Okay. And what's before us this evening is simply to, whether to put these on a town meeting warrant or not and not to debate them here tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we don't have a choice for citizen's petitions anyway?
For citizen's petitions, you really have to put them on. You can make a recommendation when you make your recommendations on every article, you know, that town meeting should be defeated or take no action or pass.
And so, Article 32, 33, and 34, all citizens' petitions.
If you'd like to discuss them, that is board's privilege.
Does anybody want to discuss any of these?
I just thought you needed to know what they were, obviously. That's important.
I want to discuss them whether the citizens come in.
When it's time?
Exactly.
Yep, that makes sense.
Works for me. Do I have a motion then?
Motion to place Article 32, 33, and 34 on the town warrant. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's that.
Yeah, it's fine.
Nobody from China Walk ended up coming, huh?
They are not outside.
Do we want to table it or do we want to just, is there?
No, I'm a little concerned the events of the day may have affected them.
I know.
So, I will reach out to them.
So, we'll table that?
Please. Please, if you don't, that would be great.
Sorry, we're going to table the transfer. Do we need to vote to table it?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have Town Manager FY26 budget review.
Yep. You've got the other one right here.
Okay, in your packet, you have a couple of items. My recommended memo with the recommended schedule, and then you have the entire presentation from this evening on the budget and what we're doing tonight. So, I'm going to get into it. We're going to be talking about expense budgets this evening. I will state that some of the budgets and some of the items we talked on the revenue will change as we move forward. Obviously, State A will firm up later in the year as the legislature works through that, we'll get a better idea of where that's going to be. And as we get more information on revenue sources, we will be making minor updates. We're pretty close on everything on the revenue side, so there won't be any major changes to the revenue side. On the expense side, there will maybe be some changes as we work through some of this, some of the budgets, and as we get more known information when we walk through that. But tonight's are budgets that I didn't need department heads here to discuss. Basically, they're managed through the town manager's office or they're boards or committee budgets that are pretty small overall. So, we are, I'm going to do an overview that's just going to tell you what the status is. You have the proposed schedule and a memo from me in your packet. We're going to talk about the detailed budgets for health insurance, information technology, legal, all of the debt, Medicare tax, property and liability insurance, reserve fund, retirement, town building maintenance, town landing, town clockwinder, unemployment, zoning board, advisory committee, town memorial committee, short-term interest. I won't be doing short-term interest today because we're recalculating some of those numbers, so we're going to pass on that for this evening. Plymouth County Cooperative, Planning Board, Moderator Life Insurance, Historical Commission, and the Conservation Commission. So, here's where we're at. The top half is general fund expenses totaling $56,062,611. No changes to this from what we had previously discussed. Shared services, obviously fringe benefits, big number property liability, retirement, debt service, reserve fund. This is what I call the roll-up page. It's going to stay in this format for the entire discussion. I will highlight any changes as we move forward. And then below the appropriation level, there are some required items that are not appropriated that have to be funded. That is state and county assessments, the cherry seed offsets. Cherry seed offsets are your cherry seed numbers that are for a specific dedicated purpose that you cannot change, and it's a non-appropriated aid. And the overlay fund is required by statute. And then the final one, which we'll talk about a little bit tonight, is the snow removal supplement. We budget $185,000. If it exceeds that, we have to close that before we set the recap. It has exceeded that, so we're going to talk a little bit about that this year and what that means. Here we are.
Question?
Sure.
What are the titles of the columns?
So, they are the fiscal years. If I go back here, oh, it's not there. So, from right to left, it's the recommended budget for fiscal '26, the budget, the actual budget for '25, '24, and '23. Sorry about that. I should have put those on there. So, here's the snow and ice expenditure history. The bottom column is the deficit column on an annual basis. And my note there, as of today, the current year expenses for snow and ice are $240,0293. We're basically $55,000 over budget that we will need to close at the fall town meeting. That will likely be just a free cash vote to close that. Obviously, we're going to have more snow and ice costs as we progress through the rest of the winter.
Do we have to vote for emergency spending on that?
Nope.
No?
Not anymore. You used to have to. But the select boards used to have to do that under the Reform Act, some of the, just prior to COVID, they changed that, so you no longer do. Yeah, you used to have to go through and do that. Some towns still do if you want to, we can, but it's not, it's not a requirement anymore. This is a breakdown from highest to lowest of the FY26 proposed budget and the departmental share. You can see that schools, which is the case for most cities and towns, is the highest. This has been between 50 and 51 and a half percent for almost over a decade now, so it's similar to where it's been. Fringe benefits, that has not been at 13.9% for over a decade. That has increased, and we're going to talk about the healthcare portion of that tonight. Public safety, that's police, fire, and emergency management, the retirement account. This also has increased dramatically over the last decade. We're going to talk about that this evening. Debt service, we'll be talking about the detailed debt service. Administrative support services, that's basically the people that work in this building. Public works, property liability insurance, Pembroke Library, Recreation Council and Aging Services, town building, maintenance, and utilities, town clerk and elections, reserve fund, boards and committees, and then the Lydia Drake Library brings in the bottom. So, it's going to start out, talking about healthcare. We attended a month ago, the treasure collector and I, a meeting with our healthcare advisors. We are members of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. They hire a company to advise, and the statement was made, which almost had me fall out of my chair, that health insurance costs are expected to rise 20% for the, every year for the next four to five years. That is, when you're looking at a $10 million budget, that is a scary number. I mean, 20%, if you think about it, $10 million is over $2 million. We can't afford that. Now, we are in very good shape in the municipal healthcare group, that we have done a very nice job, and I'll give the county treasurer the accolades, because he deserves it on this, of making sure that the fund is in very good financial shape and they have substantial amount of money that they're going, likely going to vote, haven't yet, but likely going to vote to offset that increase. So, we're expecting it to be in the 7% to 10% range, 10% range. This budget is just under an 8% number that we're carrying. I've had some talks with the county treasurer, just to make sure I'm comfortable with that. They're going to vote to take funds out of their cash reserves and offset those rates. Now, I think that's great, while you have those cash reserves, but in five years from now, if you no longer have those cash reserves and the healthcare costs are still skyrocketing, it really creates a burden on cities and towns. So, we need to keep a very good eye on that and help to manage that and potentially look at how we are for healthcare. You know, I know a lot of cities and towns are in panic mode right now because they're members of groups or they insure themselves that don't have that cash reserve to offset the rates. So, this is where we're at. It's a recommended budget of $10,162,621, and this is based upon our January, the original numbers were back October, but I updated them, so it's based on our January enrollment Moving on, information technology is the next one I want to talk about. Another one where we're seeing some substantial increases. We just got an increase in our VMware licensing costs, and we are going to go, likely go away from VMware. I had a meeting today with our advisors, and I said, "We've got to find something else." And they said, "There are other solutions, and within a week, I'll know what those other solutions are." I did not budget the full cost of the VMware. We were paying just under $5,000. We just got our renewal, and it's over $20,000. That is, it made me angry, number one, because we should have been given a heads-up on that, but what happened was VMware got purchased by another company, and the new company increased those rates. So, we're seeing part of that here, and then the other big increase is obviously in our maintenance. So, the licensing costs are going up, our maintenance costs are going up. Everything else is relatively flat in comparison, but the budget is going up over $22,000. So, there isn't a whole lot we can do about that. We have to operate, and we have to have computers and technology that allows us to operate, so.
Any update on the, I've talked about a number of times, about the sharing of like some kind of like IT facilities director of some sort?
So, we've, you mean with schools?
Yeah. Schools.
So, we've talked about it with the schools. The challenge there is that the schools have a very different IT network. I mean, and the server and den has really good, what's her term? IT stands for?
Information technology.
No, it stands for information technology on our side, something about information teaching or something, that their mindset is very different than our mindset. We are, we are, our information technology is to provide a service to taxpayers in or, you know, assessing, you know, payroll, collections, data, accounts payable, accounts receivable. So, we, and day-to-day Microsoft Office stuff. The schools have a very different mindset that they're educational-based, so a lot of their stuff is still, there's some data, but it's very different data, and it's obviously student data, educational data. So, we originally thought it might be a good idea, and as we explored a little more, we're not sure that that would really work, or presented cost savings, because whichever side takes it, I was going to have to add staff to do it. So, there, you know, there's some stuff we may still explore and still look at, but overall, the full IT shared with the schools isn't going to work. So, but we at least looked at it, and we'll explore the areas, you know, perhaps forced IP phones and a couple of other smaller things like that. So, any other questions on IT? Moving forward, legal services. I want to talk about this because I actually did a little bit of research. I talked to some law firms out there to see, you know, if we were to consider moving away from KP Law, what it would mean from a budget standpoint, would other firms be willing to take us on? So, the answer is yes, they're willing to take us on, but it's almost a 40% increase in costs. We are, we had a small percentage, you can see, a small percentage increase this year from KP Law. We are not, excuse me, not 40%, $40 per hour. So, we would go from the low 260s, the low 200s to the 250 to 260 per hour if we were to move to other firms.
So, it'd be like a 25%.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I just, when I, I thought about 40, and it's $40, not 40%. So, so that's where that's at. It's a modest increase. I will state that the 23 and the 24 actual numbers are and were over budget, and they actually are over what we're funding. A huge portion of that was our lawsuits with SPAC. We've spent a lot of money. We would have actually been about, we would have had some other similar costs, but we would have probably been $25,000 under budget without those, having to defend those lawsuits. So, going to talk about debt. Here are the four major categories of debt. The two principal ones are what you see is 710 and 712. of debt. The two principal ones are what you see is 710 and 712. 710 is general fund debt that is not debt exclusion. It's considered within levy. 712 is debt excluded debt. 720 is the interest for non-debt excluded borrowing, and 722 is the interest for debt excluded borrowing. So those are the totals in the right-hand column. Again, I apologize for not putting the headers on the, I cut and paste this. I have a massive spreadsheet, and the headers are at the top of the column, and I should have included them. But it's basically the same. No, it's not the same. Yes, these are the budgets from 23, 24. Well, in this case, let me just look real quick. Yeah. So from right to left, 26 recommended, 25 budget, 24, 23, 22, so that you have all of those. And I apologize for that. I'll try to correct that next time. So here is the detail for FY26. This is our, from our actual debt structure. The first column there is just a number that we put alongside of the debt. The description is the next column, the date it was incurred, and the date it's paid off. And then this number in the right-hand column is the principal number. You have all the detail. I'm not going to read every single one. This is within levy debt. There's two pages of those. The total, $1,208,691. And then the next section is the interest on that debt, same columns. And then the interest total is $375,842.
What are the two columns of dates? Can you say what those are?
So the first, the first date is the date it was incurred.
Okay.
The date we borrowed, and the la, next date is the date the last payment is made. So it's paid off. For example, on the top of this column on the screen, it was incurred in February 10th, 2017. It's paid off February 1st, 2027. So interest on the debt exclusion, $581,126. Any questions on debt before I move on to property, property liability? I mean, I will, you certainly can ask questions at future meetings. If you have something, we'll start out the meeting with a question if someone has a specific question. One thing, one thing everybody always asks is if you look at the slide, you can see school roof, section 111. That is because we can't exclude that section. It is, it is something that is covered as a, as a premium to us. So we have to discount it and not include it because it's funds that are coming to the town. That's why you see a negative number, the 14,525 there under school roofs. You'll see the same on the inter, on the principal payment there, the minus $55,000. So moving on to property liability insurance. This is one we're studying. We're working very hard with folks to take a look, to make sure that we are properly covered, to make sure that we are paying, you know, a fair and competitive price for our insurance. Our insurance is going up. You can see that. Our workers' comp is, we're in good shape there. We're self-insured, so we have to carry that. Contracted services are for, are basically for the workers' comp administrator. We pay a third-party administrator, which is best practice. Property and liability insurance is just that. It's the property and liability insurance for all of our property, and we're projecting a large increase based upon our insurance agents. And we're looking aggressively at that process right now. So this-
What's driving it? Is purely inflation? Is there some risk assessment?
So it's not our risk assessment, because we've had very little claims overall in comparison. It's just the industry, it's become less competitive. There's less insurers, less underwriters. So it's, it's not as competitive, so it's pushing it up. However, we're trying to make it more competitive by making sure that we ask the right questions and make our agents go out and bid these things to make sure that we're telling our current underwriters that, hey, you're not the only person, you may be limited, but you're not the only person. If you don't come to the table, you know, we're likely going to go walk and go somewhere else.
Are we limited to only purchase this insurance within the state of Massachusetts? I know there's some restrictions at the state level.
Define what you mean. So our, no, our insurance policies are, our insurance policies meet Massachusetts statutes, but they're underwritten by companies out of Massachusetts. So we're not purchasing from-
So we can cast a wider net. There is a net out there that we can cast, okay?
So, and then the last column there, the 111F is just workers' comp for police and fire, and then the $40,000 is for stop-loss insurance for our workers' comp in the event that we have a large claim. We thought we were going to be able to do that for $35,000. Every single person we're talking to is telling us we can't. So we've increased that this year back to $40,000. So any questions on property and liability? Okay. Moving on, Plymouth County Retirement System. It's going up, and I'm going to actually, because there's been a couple of questions about that. I actually took some time and went through the actuarial reports to project what our numbers are going to look like over the next few years and when we're going to see that drop. So the number is going from 5,241,631 to 5,88, is that, no, it should be 809. Does that say 809?
Yes.
809,472.
Sadly, yes.
Okay. So that's a large increase. We're going to see that large increase for a few more years, and then it's going to drop off. What I did, and that's based upon prepaying because it's cheaper for us. We can't make enough interest with the savings the county would give us. And I'll show that slide, too. But what I did was, I took this slide, and I went through the actuarial report. And the key column here is the far-right column, because that is the town of Pembroke, based upon that actuarial report, the town of Pembroke's projected payment for our pension fund. And you can see in 2031, that is the last year we had that big number, and it drops off. The plan is to take that savings, right now in our plan is to take that savings and apply it to OPEB. We may want to reconsider. We want to pay our OPEB down, but we also want to make sure that we're doing a fair job with the town budget. So we may want to reconsider that and take a look at that when we get closer to that. And I'm going to be developing a plan and a recommendation for the board based upon that discussion. So here it is. You can see it's got substantial increases between fiscal 26, which is, these numbers are if we did not prepay any year, because that's the actual assessment. They give us a benefit. That's why the number isn't the same as the page, but the actuarial number are these numbers. So, but it's going to increase substantially from 5.9 to 8.5 over the next six years, and then it's going to drop substantially down to 346. So very important factor there, and something we should be planning around.
And this, this payment structure is set in stone?
It's not set in stone. These are my, the actuarial reports get updated every two years. It will be updated during this time. These are my estimates based upon our actuarial numbers and the county's actuarial as a whole, and their investments that go into that. So I've done substantial work with actuarial stuff in the past, and I wanted to be able to present that so we could see where we're going to be, what we're looking at. So if, if the actuarial numbers change, you know, if, if the, the life expectancy numbers change, then these numbers will change. If our salaries change, these numbers will change. So these numbers will likely change as we do future actuarials. But right now, based on the actuarial facts, this is the projection. Any questions on that? Okay. The next slide is the retirement savings calculation. And the reason I do this is because the county, you could pay it one payment in July and one payment in December. If we do that, we'd be paying 5,919,553. If we pay it all in July, the county gives us a break, and we'll make that, we'll make that payment in July. If we do that, it's a savings of $110,000. If we were to take that money and invest it at our current rates, we would only earn $59,000 in interest on that savings by making a semi-annual payment. So we're actually saving $50,885 by actually paying it once in July. It's, it's a net savings to the town, and there's no reason for us not to do that. If we're going to save $50,000, almost $51,000, we should be doing that. Next budget is the facilities maintenance budget. So the staffing are the staff and the custodians in all of the town buildings. The expense, general expenses portion is mostly related to town hall, although we do have some IT shared items with town hall. So the first line, the custodial, those are the base salaries. We do have some overtime numbers. Most of our overtime is, is related to snow overtime, which gets charged to the snow and ice budget. So keep in mind that anytime they're working snow and ice, it's not coming out of this budget, although they are working. Longevity is contractual obligation, and vacation buyback is a contractual obligation. So the total salaries, $199,634. I'm going to note there, one item, if you look at the actuals for 2024, we had a very difficult time hiring custodians. I know I preached it to this board. I know I preached it to advisory. And that's partially why we have that line item there. That is a new line item called contract cleaning. We have been forced to hire contractors. It covers two basic areas, specialty cleaning and, you know, regular cleaning, because there is no custodian in the building. So you can see we spent in 2024, $21,000 for that. So the rest of the expenses are for managing the building and, you know, for wireless data, for the telephone. That is, that is not part of the IT budget. Postage, supplies, custodial supplies, and fuel for the vehicle. There isn't, we don't use that vehicle a whole lot. It's a very old vehicle. Let's see it out there. I think it was out in the parking lot here today. So, yes.
Question, if you could help me understand a little bit better.
Sure.
Going back to contract cleaning versus the custodial.
Yeah.
So 2024 and, sorry, 2024 actual, we paid $21,000 in contract cleaning.
Mm-hmm.
In-house, it was $77,000, right?
Correct.
The custodial in-house. So that's a total of just under $100,000. And going all in-house, we jumped up to $187,000?
Didn't have the, we didn't have the community center online at that point.
Okay, so this now includes the community center?
That's the big difference. Custodial services for the community center.
Okay.
That's your biggest difference there.
Okay. That's the primary driver there. Okay. You had mentioned before that, talking about the community center, that it's, is it, it's paying for itself? It's starting to pay for itself? It's trending to pay for itself?
Certainly getting to that point where it's, where it's paying for itself, the revenue.
The alcohol helps.
And the alcohol will certainly-
It always does.
Certainly help, because people will want, you get more people coming to the building for weddings. And we've had some, some, some events there. You know, folks that didn't really care about the alcohol piece, you know, certainly leased the space, and we're doing pretty well programming-wise. We're doing awesome. One of the things that has absolutely shocked me, and if you're a Pembroke resident, I'm not sure how you feel about this, but people from out of town paying a fee to use the building. You know, Pembroke residents obviously take precedent and don't pay a fee to use, a lot of the facilities like the walking track and some of the other stuff. But families from out of town are paying to use the building, so.
We're seeing that trend continuing to increase?
Yeah, not as rapidly as when we first opened, but yes. So especially families that do homeschooling, because they need that component.
Is there any, is there any worth to any kind of advertising budget for the community center, to the region?
So the-
If there's interest, there might be more people who are-
Recreation Department is a wonderful job of, you know, advertising their programming and availability of the building. I, I see that trend line's doing well, so I'm not sure that we need to do the advertising. If we see that drop or those trend lines change, I would consider that. Okay. Any questions on facility? Okay. Next one is town landing. I'm not cutting this budget. This cut, this budget's a moneymaker. The, and when I cut it that one year where we had to cut it, I got a little bit of a shock that, that I had a huge number of calls. Those swimming lessons that are offered by our lifeguards are incredibly important to this community. So it absolutely, almost pays 100% for itself. So I considered even increasing it, and we'll look at that in future years if, if we get in a better financial position. I just couldn't in good faith do that this year. So any questions? We did reallocate some of the expense lines because of changes that we don't, where we didn't need money, we decreased it. And where we did need extra funds, we increased it. So, okay, moving on. Okay, so there's a bunch of budgets in that I'm going to talk about tonight. These are all basic things that are required by statute or boards and committees. So Medicare tax required by statute. As we settle our contracts, this number will change. This is based upon your base salary of your employees, a percentage of that you pay for what's called FICA, or it's basically Medicare tax. So that will change if the salaries change substantially. Right now, it's not. Life insurance is offered, but this is a pass-through, like, you know, well, it's not 100% pass-through, pass-through. The costs that are above and beyond the base that we offer within our contracts, the obligations. But this, this is the basic cost for that program. Unemployment compensation, we had back, we had some scams on unemployment, so we had some costs that we had to fight through and get back and forth. We're now stabilized on that, so I'm comfortable with this budget. Town clock winder, winds the town clock. We pay a very bargain price for that. I hope he's not watching. Does a wonderful job, makes sure the clock functions 100%. And if you haven't looked at that space, you should probably take a look at it. It is, it is absolutely amazing. So. What's that? Oh, we have a clock in our office. It was built by a former resident of Pembroke.
Is Sabrina the select board?
What's the guy's name?
Clockwinder?
Foster, Foster Campos.
There's a whole write-up on this. Should have shared the subject.
We should have, we should have.
New line.
But it was donated, it was donated to the town, you know, and it's hung in the select board slash town manager's office. So super excited about that, too.
And it was great because your, your town clock winder that you guys have been great to support walked in one day and said, I heard you have a Campos clock. And he took it, tuned it up, cleaned it, brought it back, and he comes to visit it.
Oh.
He taught us to wind. He's like-
He's to visit it.
The guy's amazing. He showed, he showed, I don't do it, because I'll drop it off the wall. But Sabrina and Angela, they wind it. It's absolutely amazing.
They are the clockwinders, see?
Yeah, so.
I just mad, the man goes above and beyond, which is nice.
So now, if we need to set up a succession plan between the town clock winder, we can, we can do that.
He winds it, I think every Sunday about 8:00. He's often, anybody that watches, climb up.
Really?
It's kind of hairy, but-
Kind of hairy.
I've been up there. It's pretty neat.
I've not been up there.
It's certainly worth the try, to go there.
Right? How have I not been in there?
This old rickety ladder, you have to climb up and go through the hatch.
Sounds alarming and awesome.
No, it's awesome. No, good. We're good. Plymouth County Cooperative, it's, it's a modest amount of money, not changing. We get really good service there, lab, mosquitoes, et cetera, and access to their professional services. So I'm going to continue to do that. Historical Commission, we are cutting their budget. The budgets that I'm cutting on boards and committees, I'm cutting not because I'm, I'm cutting just a cut. They haven't used it, so it's not going to be an impact to any of them, because I took a multi-year look at it, and, you know, in a year, normally I wouldn't cut $150 in a budget like I am from the Historical Commission, because it's such a small cut. In a year where every penny matters, I needed to do that. So, but it should have no impact because they haven't used 100%. So Planning Board and Zoning Board have used their money. Their advertising costs are enough so that you really can't, I couldn't cut further. We could cut in FY25 down to where we thought we could, that was manageable, and we're at that number. So I really am not comfortable cutting that. Conservation Commission, similar discussion there. They haven't used it. However, we're not making a cut. We're at the number where we should be. And then the Reserve Fund, it is a cut from where I want it to be. Our Reserve Fund really isn't adequate in the event we have a major issue. I had committed to increasing this, and you can see that I did increase it for several years. I'm not this year because of the tightness of our budget. So we need to make sure we understand.
You're not increasing the contribution?
Correct.
The contribution is still going to it.
Yes. So we need to understand that, that, that needs to, as we move through future years, one of those budgets that we need to increase to a recommended best practice. We're not at that number right now, so.
How long would it take? How long does the trend line?
If we do $5,000 a year, we should be at, you know, between $150 and $200,000. And they actually recommend higher than that. I think historically would be, that would be okay. And if we project that out with our other ability to transfer.
How many years out are we from that?
That's not relative to this conversation, because this money is, is a lump of money put aside in case a boiler breaks or something. And you go to the advisory, the advisory will vote that money out of that account. So you can put a dollar in it, or you can put a million dollars in. And it's only for emergencies with a vote from the- And it's only for emergencies with a vote from the advisory board. So if you have a small amount in there, then you're taking a risk if you have a large expenditure. So it's not, it's not like you're, it's not like the OPEB fund where you're trying to add, 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 add.
Right. Yeah, it is, that's the challenge we have. We are taking a very large risk with this number. And the way to solve that risk is you petition the state to get money from the state, which isn't always available, especially in years like this year, which are very tight for the state or you hold this emergency town meeting to appropriate funds. So, we should get there. I guess, he's right, it's not relevant, but it would take us 10 to 12 years. So. Moderator, no change there, it's a modest salary. Advisory Committee, there is a change there, but that's only because I haven't been using it. We don't have tons of meetings where we need to, so I was comfortable making that cut. And we will, you know, if we need to, we will augment that budget. We have two opportunities. We are going to have a fall town meeting this year. There, there's too much happening where we can't have a fall time meeting. So we're telling everybody, don't plan on not having a fall time meeting. We will have a fall time meeting this year. So we'll have the opportunity to augment any budget at the fall time meeting and then again at the spring town meeting next year for this budget that we're talking about. And if funds become available, we want to do that. We are, I'm working with the schools to create a priorities list as we speak, as we go through this budget, so. And then the final one that we're going to talk about tonight is life insurance. Oh, I already talked about life insurance. So I'm there twice. I apologize. I wonder why I did that.
Went from a pass-through to being now a budget item twice.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a budget item once, not twice. So, just a total screen and where we're at. The reason I put this up there is because I want to highlight that number right there, okay? Under our current revenue stream, that is our available funds that are unappropriated. We really can't appropriate anymore because if you average our tax rate, we need that money to average the tax rate to a whole penny. Because if you think about that, we can't tax at a half a penny. So we can't exceed Prop 2.5, so we really can't do that. The reason I'm putting that up there and talking about it is because we have a $55,000 deficit in snow and ice that we'll need to close at the fall. So we're going to need to likely appropriate free cash to close that gap. And it's going to be more than $55,000 when we're done. I know that there are unpaid bills for assault and other things that are, that are out there. All of our wages were paid in today's payroll, but that will, you know, it's going to be more than that, that gap, so. I think that's it, yes. So any questions or comments? I will say that there will be changes to this budget as we work through it. I will highlight those changes as we do that. Hopefully most of those changes are good. And knock, knock on wood that we don't get some surprises from the State House of the Governor when she signs the budget, so. Or surprises on, on healthcare or insurance or anything as we work through that process. If you have questions, rely, you have the packet that we talked about tonight, you have the schedule of budgets, department heads will be joining me in the future because we're going to be talking about department budgets where we have department heads. And so you'll be able to ask questions specifically of them. I will tell you upfront, there are going to be a couple of department heads that are going to walk to that microphone and say, "He cut things he shouldn't have cut." I don't have a choice. State mandates that we, that we have a balanced budget, we cannot deficit spend except for snow and ice under the statute. And I cut areas that I think we can manage and need to manage. And I also cut areas from the larger budgets. You know, for example, if I cut veterans, for example, Mary's getting laid off. There isn't anywhere to cut when you have one person that's a full-time person in the office. So it's very difficult to do that. And then if you cut assessing, then you're not collecting all of your new growth. Collectors, similar story. You know, our office, we manage all of the licenses and everything for, for you folks and the day-to-day operations of the town. So unfortunately, those, those items do come from the larger budgets when you look at that. So, we'll, we'll see what happens. We will manage it. As I said, we have three opportunities, no, two additional opportunities after the time, this time meeting to make those corrections. And then a third opportunity, so two time meetings, fall time meeting, spring time meeting next year, to correct any budget deficits that we have. And then a third opportunity, as we close our budgets, doing what was traditionally called the 3% transfer. You used to have to come and get those all voted. Now we just have to get advisory under the same statute that changed some of the other stuff we talked about earlier. So you can transfer from funds that are available to those budget line items that are over budget. You have until July 15th to complete that process. So, we're going to monitor those very closely, work with department heads and support them everywhere we can and so that we can make those changes if it becomes necessary.
And so, obviously tonight with the town warrant, we just voted to put the articles on the town warrant. There was a citizen's petition on there where some citizens are asking essentially for a Prop 2.5 override. To be clear, obviously we're not voting favorability or not anything, but we are not asking for that.
We are not, and I am not-
We are not, and we are not asking for that. That is a citizen's petition.
Correct. And I will tell you that a proposition 2.5 over operating override must be completely planned. You can't go at the last minute and ask the residents to do that. You have to plan it, you have to be thoughtful about it, you need to think about your needs. You need to make sure that you're covering that multi-year process. So you're not asking for an override every single year. I'm going to come out and tell you, it is a bad idea. We need to, as I said, we need to cite our needs, we need to cite where we can, you know, cut. That's what we're talking about now with budgets. We need to talk to the schools and make sure we understand what the school needs are long-term. And if we're going to have an override, you know, we've got a lot of things on the table that aren't part of that discussion. I'll give you the biggest one, and that's vocational school and where the town goes with vocational education. It needs to be planned and thoughtful. So I will not be supporting that.
So what's your budget calendar? When will you complete all your interviews with the, with the department heads and then present your, what you think is your final budget to the advisory?
So you have the calendar, when department heads are going, and a memo there. We're going to work through it over the next two months. We have basically met with most department heads at this point. I and me, the next two weeks, meeting with department heads to talk about presentations and to, so that everybody's on the same page where we're at. So, those discussions with department heads will be completed within the next two weeks.
Anything else?
One note, I made a mistake on the memo, doesn't affect the select board, but it does affect advisory. For some reason, I thought Patriot's Day was the 14th of April and I scheduled them for the 21st. We're moving everything that was scheduled for advisory on the 21st to the 14th because the 21st is indeed Patriot's Day. So that, that is, yeah, I know, that is, that is a change.
The day after Easter, too.
That is, that is a change on the memo that you received this evening. If you want to change anything that's on that memo from a schedules process, please let me know so we can let department heads know because they've all been told and have worked, we've worked with them to make sure that they're scheduled when they're available,
You have nothing else? Does anyone else? Thank you, Bill. All we have left is community comment. Do we have any community comment from the board? Do we have any community comment from Linda? All right then. Upcoming issues, March 5th at 7:30, we have a local license transfer hearing. April 23rd, all warrants are signed for posting on April 29th, 2025. May 13th at 7:00 PM is our annual town meeting. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Jagan.
All in favor? Thank you.